I'm going to admit everyone and you will be all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. All right. Okay. All right, the Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. All right, I'll call the meeting to order January 8th, 2024, 6:00 PM. And we will start with public comment. Seeing no hands raised virtually or anyone in person who would like to speak? All right, we will move forward with our student report with Louisa Kinsley and David Murphy.
Is it on? Oh, yes, it is. Okay. All right. Hello, everyone. I hope you guys are doing well. It's been a while, so I guess we'll get going. So recently, our Patriot League All Scholastic teams have just been chosen. On the first team are Jackson Belson for football, who is also a Boston Herald All-Scholastic, Lawson Foley, also for football, who is a Boston Globe and Boston Herald All-Scholastic, and Sumner Harris for girls volleyball. And then on the second team are Charlie Hartwell for football, Meyer Gack for boys golf, Lauren Thompson for girls volleyball, Katie Von Fryman for field hockey, and Ava Von Fryman for field hockey as well. And some honorable mentions were Willie Robinson for football, Brooke McCarthy for girls soccer, Luke Ryan for boys golf, and Molly Gold for field hockey. Congratulations to all these talented athletes for this accomplishment. You've all had fantastic seasons. Winter sports are underway at Situate High School with a record amount of athletes participating. Our teams are off to the great start to a great year. And our DECA program also sent 79 students to districts last week, and 26 of those students qualified for states. Students winning in their categories were Lindsay Thurling in automated marketing, Amelia Katsum and Julia Yona in the entrepreneurship team competition, Imani Somerville in personal finance literacy, Parker Hausmann and Cooper McDonald in the travel and tourism team event, and Henry Cannon for the highest overall score on the finance exam. Congratulations to all our DECA students for their success. Student high school winter concerts were also on Tuesday, December 12th, and Thursday, December 14th in the pack. The students performed wonderfully on both nights, so excellent job to all of them. Additionally, blue cards were handed out last week to all students on the honors rolls or perfect attendance. The administration allowed students to exchange these cards for a free ice cream sandwich for their hard work. I did get a blue card, but since I still have to watch my way for wrestling, I was once again forced to sit down. One day I'll be able to indulge. We'll see. Spirit Week is also underway at Situate High School. To get into, well, the spirit of the event, all hallways were decorated with different themes. Student involvement has been outstanding, and the week was super fun. And so with that, I'm all done. I'll hand over the reins to Louisa now. Thank you all so much.
Hi, everyone. I hope you enjoyed the holidays. So to start, Mr. LaRanger and his administration team met with student leadership before winter break to discuss ways to improve school culture at Situate High School. It was a great meeting, and student celebrations were the main topic discussed. The eighth grade Set Sail showcase will be on Thursday, January 18th at Situate High School from 6:00 to 7:30. All eighth grade parents, guardians, and students are encouraged to attend to hear more about what Situate High School has to offer. Midterm exams start on Thursday, January 18th, so we wish good luck to all Situate High School students. The Class Cup events for December were posted by administration last month. All students who attended these specified events signed in using a QR code at the event in order to get points for their class. The Class Cup has been a great way to show school spirit and to encourage more students to attend school events. So recent Class Cup events included the winter concert on Thursday, December 14th, the girls' basketball game versus Pembroke on Friday, December 15th, and the boys' basketball game versus North Quincy on Tuesday, December 19th. And there are many more upcoming events as well. For some guidance news, the Situate High School Counseling Department is collaborating with Situate High School Administration and department chairs to present the 2024 to 2025 SHS Program of Studies, which I believe you'll hear more about later tonight. They're working towards implementing a more transparent and streamlined course selection process for students and families. For post-secondary planning, the SHS School Counseling Team is excited to share that they will be introducing a new college readiness exploration tool for students and families. Score will be rolled out soon for ninth through 11th grade students. And one of the many advanced features of the program will allow students to invite parents and caregivers to join their individual student accounts. There's also a mobile app feature associated with the program. The SHS Counseling Team will host an evening for parents and caregivers on the post-secondary planning process on January 25th at 6:30 PM. Counselors will run two concurrent sessions, one for 11th grade caregivers regarding college and alternatives to four-year schooling, and one for ninth and 10th grade families on the early post-secondary planning process. Counselors will also begin running a series of workshops during the school day to help guide juniors through the post-secondary planning process. And as part of the winter splash activities on December 22nd, the high school counseling department hosted members of the SHS Class of 2023 to meet with college-bound seniors and juniors. And the alumni shared their experiences and perspectives on navigating college and life after high school. And everything from dorm living to balancing academics, living with roommates, and budgeting time and finances was discussed. So thank you for having us. It's only been a few minutes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. And we will enter with our celebration of student learning and the Fine Arts and Music Department. Turn it over to Mr. Tom.
Thank you.
Mr. Gusho.
So thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Tonight, we're going to focus on music technology courses at the high school. And before we get into this too deeply, thank you to Autumn Laverne and to Adam Gusho for their support here tonight. Just a little bit of context in terms of what music technology is. The goals of the course are to produce electronic compositions of a wide variety of genres. So we explore all sorts of different styles of music. And then to try to create a unique composition that is authentic to that stuff. Students explore and create unique compositions that speaks to them intrinsically. So one of the goals that we have is that students go well beyond the criteria of grades and really create a composition that speaks to them. There's collaboration. There's feedback provided by students. Where this is a performance-based assessment, in real time, we can provide feedback to students. And then, as I kind of alluded to in the intrinsic motivation part, a hallmark of the course is that kids tend to go well beyond the criteria of the grading criteria and really truly make the composition their own. Some of the equipment that's involved with music technology, you can see Autumn has some of the basic stuff here. We have an Ableton Push II controller. That's the grid there. And maybe Mr. Gusho wants to explain how that is creating accessibility?
Yeah. So we received about, we have 17 of these units right now. They were really generously given to us by both the grant organizations, SHOR and SEF. So we're really, really thankful for them to get, they got this kind of off the ground in 2019. And we've just been building on it since. And what those controllers do is they operate the music production software called Ableton Live. And it's an industry-standard software. I thought it was really, really important when I was kind of revamping the course was to move away from like the Chromebook versions of like some of these softwares, which are usually just like depending on the internet and they crash. And they're nice for getting started, but I wanted our students to have something they would use in the real world, something that doesn't have the limits. And then they can really, really dig in, and then they can carry with it whatever they want to do with their life or if they want to pursue this kind of music making in the future. We've expanded it to using lighting systems. The students are even starting to kind of expand themselves into like synthesizers and all a bunch of other wizardry-looking things, but like we explain it to them. And it's been really, really fun to watch the course grow. And then students like Autumn really, really take an interest to it. Even just buy their own equipment and do stuff at home, which has been just wonderful to see.
Yeah, just another word about the Ableton Push controllers. It provides an access point into what would otherwise be music theory. So we can backfeed information in terms of like what a triad is after the students have experienced it on the boards themselves. So it's a really good access point.
Yeah, I'll dig in a little bit farther than that. Like, there's a lot of stuff that they can, the students can skip over and just get to making music. But they're still doing it in an authentic way. They don't have to understand exactly what notes they're putting down. They just have to understand that I need to put down three notes to make the chord. And then it's just a predictable shape throughout the thing. Versus if they had, if these were just a piano, they'd have to understand what they're doing throughout it. So this is going to get them into the creative process right away. And then those things can come later. So then they can have a deeper understanding of what they're actually doing, but they can just jump right in and be creative, which I think is my favorite thing about them.
Some of the big picture student learning outcomes that we're looking for is independent learning, and that runs hand-in-hand with this course. There's a lot of trial and error. There's a lot of creative risk-taking, problem-solving. And again, our hope is that they become invested in their composition and really want to try to maximize their results. And then just some of the foundational compositional skills like creating a melody, a bassline, chord progressions, drum beats, understanding of the components of a particular style of music or styles of music. And this can literally lead to a viable career path in the music industry, whether it's like going in the band of a recording artist or perhaps like composing music for video games, that sort of thing. So there's also a lot of options. So now we get to the fun part. Autumn gets to demonstrate a couple of things for us. The first one is interesting in that she's going to, in real time, create an improvisation, I guess, if you will, where she's going to create drum beats.
Just, yeah, drum beats.
Yeah, and go for it.
Hi, I'm Autumn. And yeah, so to start, I already have a couple instruments selected, and I've already pre-made a couple loops, meaning just tracks of chord progressions and basslines and lead. So I can play a couple of those now. We have bassline, two layers, and we have a lead. So now we need to make a drum. So the most basic drum pattern is a kick and a snare on beats one and three. So if we put a kick on one, then we do snare on beat two. Basic boom, kick. You can add hi-hat to make it a little more interesting. So you have hi-hat. And then you can add random little extra notes for the hi-hat. Add extra notes for the kick. And then you can simplify it to make a little bit of a breakdown in the middle of whatever you're making. So I can copy the file and then just make it a little simpler, maybe without hi-hat, just to add change. And then I can make a riser, meaning the buildup of a song to up until like the drop. So we have already, we can have other instruments playing, and we can have white noise in the background slowly, like crescendoing. So for risers, you usually just do snares, just to make it simple. Can you get that before the beat?
You're doing great.
This is amazing. So impressive.
Yeah.
And so on. And you can add other instruments. That's amazing. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Awesome. Thank you, Autumn.
Thank you.
We thought it'd be kind of neat to ask Autumn a few kind of overarching questions about the course itself and her thoughts on that. So what did you find to be the most challenging aspect of the course?
Probably just trying to come up with new things to make. Like figuring out what to add and then actually adding it. But then, once you listen to the entire thing, you realize, oh, that doesn't work at all. So the just trial and error and like perseverance portion of it has been challenging. Yeah.
And how about, on the other hand, what's been most rewarding about the course?
When it all finally like works. You can listen to a mostly finished product that you made, and you can recognize all the little parts that you put in and all of the components finally coming together to make something really cool.
Nice. And then what skills and concepts taught in this course do you think will help you in the future?
So I want to pursue a, sorry, I want to pursue a career in music of some sort just because I find it to be one of the most, if not the most interesting thing that I could do. And so, of course, the basics of learning how to produce music with chord progressions and drum beats and basslines, all the basic components of a song and figuring out how to make that sound good. But then also the concept of trial and error, again, figuring out how to persevere when you find a problem that might not be able to be fixed originally, like initially. And that can be implemented in so many different fields. So even if I don't actually want to become a full-time musician, I can use the trial and error and learning mistakes to go and be whatever else. Because, I mean, that's the, that's the everything.
Yeah, valuable skills, regardless. Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Let's give Autumn a huge round of applause. And to close, there's our performance schedule through March. Left a link there for the remainder of the year, so we're pretty busy right now.
Autumn, I think I've finished.
Oh, did you?
Do you want to hear?
Oh, yeah. We have a, we have a one that's been prepared by Autumn, and this is going to be awesome. Turn it up a little bit.
And then I, so I also have a picture of the finished composition in Ableton, so I can like turn my computer around just to show. Scary.
That's fine. That's good enough.
Once again, thanks to Autumn and Mr. Gusho.
Can I just ask a question of Autumn? That was awesome. That's great. Thank you. I'm just curious, what kind of, what piqued your interest in pursuing music? Was it, was it anything specific? Was it generated elementary school at home? I'm just curious kind of how your interest began.
Yeah, of course. So during the pandemic, I was introduced to BandLab, which is one of the Chromebook-y kind of limited, not great production softwares, but it worked enough. And so when I was, starting when I was like 11 or 12, I just started finding pre-made loops and samples and dragging them in and just making stuff. Did not sound great, but I just kind of made stuff and went with that until I decided I didn't want to use pre-made samples anymore, so I made my own. It was okay. And then I got into high school, and I realized there was a music production class. And I was like, oh, I want to continue with this because it's just fun and like a kind of a little hobby that I started doing during the pandemic. And taking the class helped me expand what I could do and how I could do it. So now I have Ableton and I have a Push, so I can like make my own things using the skills that I got in the class.
Great. Thank you.
And Mr. Mike.
And my, I'm sorry. And my elementary school music teacher was absolutely amazing.
All roads lead to that path. I think I like music because of Mr. Mike, too. All right. Well, we really appreciate you coming in and sharing your amazing talents and love of music with us. Oh, sorry. Superintendent Burkhead.
Autumn, that was awesome. Thank you. For someone that got a C minus on the recorder, that's where my career ended. That was amazing. So I want to point out too that, and I would put that on my workout playlist, by the way. Put up on iTunes, make some money. I think that would win it. But I really liked what you said because that finished product, beautiful. You talked about all the work that went into it, and you talked about failing. And then you talked about perseverance, right? Because you could have stopped and then you wouldn't have had that product. So then success at the end, when the question was, what was the most, you know, best part of it, right, the success? So I'd like that to be the message to everybody because that's, you nailed kind of what we're all about, what life's all about. To be successful, you have to fail, right? Michael Jordan missed more shots than he made. Right? 300 batting average in baseball, three out of 10 times up is really good. So I think it's just that perseverance and having that skill set. So congratulations on the course because it's teaching more than music. It's teaching our kids to be resilient and gritty and to keep following their passions and dreams. So it was nice to hear your story tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
Going to turn it over to Superintendent Burkhead again here for safety committee update.
Thank you. Leeny? So today we have a donation that I'm going to hand over to Mr. Beatty. I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce or reintroduce this committee because it's extremely important. It's called the SPS Emergency Operations Planning Team. This came out after COVID. Because what's the most important thing, I think, that we are responsible for is the safety of our children and the adults in the building and the community members that visit our schools. So we thought it important to have a proactive approach to that in a group that meets regularly collaboratively of public safety, school safety, something very new to the district and something that's been very successful. And I just wanted to kind of thank some of the members here. And then I'll give you a little kind of slice of what they're working on now so that the community understands that we're proactive to the safeties, whether it be you're seeing school shootings. We've heard about them. I want the community to know that we're talking about that. We're working on our plans. We're constantly revising safety protocols proactively to be prepared for things like these fire drills certainly and all kinds of safety precautions. I'll give a few examples. But first, the members of the team that meet weekly, so this is not a monthly thing. This is a weekly thing. It's that important. And that information is shared district-wide. And I want to thank Principal Beatty and Principal Oldak, who's on Zoom tonight, for spearheading this. I went to them a couple years ago and said, can you start this? Committee's extremely important. Can you chair it? It's going to be a lot of work, top of your other full-time job. And they did it, so I want to give them kudos. Kelly Bell, our nurse leader, who is just fantastic and knows a lot about everything, but certainly a great asset. Chris Cataldo, who many of us know as our Assistant Facilities Director, who is just been amazing in what he does, great asset to the team. Rich Long, our tech director, who's the glue of all this with the technologies that I'll share in a minute. And then from Situate Police Sergeant Mike Proudy and School Resource Officer Nick Sherry and Marissa Stewart are all active members. And Situate Fighter Department, we have Chief Mark Donovan and Deputy Chief Patrick Riley. So a great mix of people. And sometimes, I went to a meeting today, so we'll have a heading on the topic. Tell the folks come in and out of that and then update the leadership team on their progress. So some of the action items that they're working on this year are cleverly develop the Comprehensive School Emergency Operations Plan, which is required by DESI being updated regularly. Quite honestly, in the past, a lot of school districts, and we were probably one of them, was a rubber stamp. You just carried the one from last year, over tweaked a few things, right? It wasn't taken seriously. I was in the meeting today when they were working on that, and they were just going line by line, verbatim, over each of the policies and the safety protocols to update them, to make sure they're accurate, that they're also practical and they're also current. So I think that, and having all those people in the room is amazing. So that's, we're in good hands with that, and it's going to be a product that will update. Then concurrently, they're working on safety drills in all the schools to incorporate enhancement to our practices. Each year, they may change slightly. Some examples include fire drills, lockdown drills, as I mentioned, and sheltering places and how they all crisscross, and there's similarities to those. And how can we be more efficient, how can we be more proactive and do well at communicating? And the Crisis and Go is a new state-of-the-art software that we purchased, and we're in the process of implementing. It's through your cell phone where you can communicate, take attendance, and navigate any type of crisis. Even the recent power outage, if we had it up and running and we're ready for that, we could have sent a message out to all of our staff on their phones and said, hey, we're going to do X, Y, and Z when phones are down and things like that. So this is the next level type of stuff, and they're in the process of the training the staff right now. And the next process will be And the next process will be drills. And then we'll take that slow, but that's something exciting. We'll do as a separate presentation because it's that important. But that's really exciting. And then the last thing is, Ryan's going to talk a little bit about is the donations from the SANS group. And so I'll turn it over to him.
So thanks for having us tonight. Principal Oldak is on Zoom and will be happy to answer any questions for you or I can do it to him person. But we are here tonight to seek approval for a donation from the SANS organization in town, the Situate Alliance for Natural Disasters. As we are putting together our emergency response plan, we recognize that we cannot do all of this work alone and it's a community effort. So I wanted to introduce, I think I see Dave Portolato over there. And do I see Becky Malaman as well? Or just, all right, so if you guys want to come on up? Because we are seeking approval for what we are calling a just-in-case kit. And the kit is important. It contains essential items that can help us in any type of emergency situation in the school, in a classroom. And Dave and, sorry, what did you?
Kim Stewart.
Kim Stewart, yes. I know you. I'm so sorry. So Dave and him are here.
I did my best to look like Becky.
There you go. Are here to kind of talk to us about the kits. And the reason why we're here so early is because these kits are going to take a lot of fundraising in order to get one in every single instructional space within our district. And we have great partners with SANS as well as the Rotary Club, Situate Community Christmas, and the PTO, all willing to help us secure these areas.
Great. So thank you for allowing me here. My name is David Portolato. I'm the Situate Fire Department.
Sure.
So I've been on the Situate Fire Department for 26 years. This bucket came about five years ago. Five years ago, we had a lockdown in one of the schools. I happened to be trapped in the school. So nobody was logged in or out. This was before we did all the training that we do now. So what happened was I saw the need that these children were locked down. They were sitting in corners. And there really wasn't a lot of training or the fact that if something actually did happen that day, the teachers didn't have the training or the ability to help if somebody was injured in their classroom. So what this bucket is, it's really kind of simple. So one of the first things it contains is a stop the bleed kit. So if somebody's injured or unfortunately if somebody's shot, they have tourniquets and things like that in the stop the bleed kit. So it's a first aid kit, just a little bit more advanced. And all the teachers will get the proper training for it, which is very quick, very easy. They do an online class. And then I would actually come in and do a hands-on class for them. And it also has instructions in case they forget how to use it. You open the kit up. It has all the instructions. It's a national, nationwide course. The other things that I noticed were the teachers who did a phenomenal job were now sitting in the corner with these children and they had nothing to do. So based on that, we were taking things like coloring books or whatever grade level this bucket was in. It would help them. So they could open up this bucket. And they had coloring books. They had fidget toys. It had a bunch of other things to keep these children occupied. We put in paper towels just in case. The other thing we found was in a lockdown, in a complete lockdown, you can't leave your room. So unfortunately, we thought of other things. We put in toilet paper because now your bucket unfortunately could become a toilet in case you needed it. You know, wipes, just little notepads they could doodle on. We had crayons. We had cards. We had everything. And then the last thing we put in what was what I thought of, which was called a memory box. So when the kids come to school their first day, I want everybody to write down their favorite memory. And you put it in the box. So in the event that something like this does happen and you're locked down and everybody's upset, the teacher can open up the memory box and ask little Johnny or Jane or whoever, do you remember the day you did this? And then they could share with the class. And then it distracts that student as well as every other student. Because now they're looking forward to their memory that they put in that box. And then they can share it. So as I said, this came about five years ago. I've worked with SANS and I've worked with everybody. Hopefully, we're going to get it 100% funded. They're really not that expensive. It's a one-time purchase. I think the initial bucket was like $100. And that's with everything in it. They wanted to upgrade a little bit, put in a second tourniquet, which will up the price. But I think we can get this 100% funded. As I said, I have backing from SANS and the Rotary Club. And I'm willing to go in front of anybody that wants to hear about it. So we can get funded. So that's it.
Do we need to vote or?
So it was my arrow on the agenda. I guess it was part presentation, our introduction. So we'll put vote on the next agenda. If that's okay. So Kenji, oh, you had a presentation and stuff. Let me just have this vote on the January 29th meeting, Dave. Okay?
Yeah, sure.
Thanks so much. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. What a fantastic idea. And one of those areas you hate to have to do, but absolutely, we really appreciate your thoughts, your efforts and yours.
Anything you need, I'm willing. I mean, I've been working on it for five years. This is the first time I got in front of you in five years. So thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to, so I'm sorry.
I was going to say a question about the emergency planning team, but do you want to finish?
I was just going to say to wrap up with, we have never focused so much on safety in my time at Situate in terms of the amount of training that we're providing staff, the amount of drills that we are doing, the amount of work we're doing with students and proactive work too with counselors and all of that. This, you know, nobody likes to talk about this topic, but we need to be as prepared as we can be. These buckets, I think the idea of a tourniquet in every classroom along with training for staff is wonderful. I think buckets could be catered to different grade levels. And the fact that we have community partnerships who are, you know, ultimately during a moment of crisis, going to be there for us if we can work together beforehand just makes us, you know, even stronger before it happens.
Thank you so much. I was just sure, this is a bigger picture question about the emergency planning team. I was just wondering if that team has had a chance to get into the new school plans at all? Just because I know in some of the parent forms and things like that, we've had questions about improved glass and accessibility and things like that. And so I'm wondering if that was something that that group would also, do I know individuals from it have definitely, you know, the fire department, police things? But I was just thinking that group as a team would maybe be a great group to review those plans too if they haven't already.
Yeah, it's a great point. So can I, and the answer is yes. I think when the time comes, I think we're getting to that in the building process now. We're actually looking at inside the classrooms and the details. And so we're talking about, I actually talked to Officer Stewart today about the windows and having, you know, when we looked at the Gates School, there's a lot of glass and some of this part of the building, there's a lot of glass. And she talked about maybe some two-way film on some of that areas that's too exposed. Things maybe we didn't talk about in the Gates project that we will be talking about in the new project. So our thought is, once we get to that, closer to that, is to kick this over to this team. Once we have the more plans in place, more specifics, to kick this over to this team to dissect and give feedback on. It's a nice, like a subcommittee already built in to do that. So absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
I mean, I agree. It's such a hard conversation, but so important to have. I'm curious about these just-in-case kits. Do they just sit in like a corner of a classroom? Is that, and it's just left alone? I'm wondering like the tourniquet, does that, I'm not a medical person at all. So like if luckily we have nothing happen in 20 years, do those things have to eventually be replaced? Or is there like an expiration to these? I'm just wondering in terms of maintenance, once we fundraise for the buckets, what does that look like?
So the tourniquets never expire.
Okay.
There are two different kits you could get. So there's one that has a blood clotting thing. And that would have to be redone every two years.
Got it.
I opted not for that.
Yep.
So you can use a regular gauze pad. And I think there every 10 years. So maybe 10 years, we may need to buy new gauze.
Okay.
But that's it.
So very low maintenance.
Very low maintenance. And the buckets, I mean, that's just a bucket. My goal is to get just an all-white bucket that the teacher could decorate. So that way, nobody suspect, it won't have any writing on it. Because you obviously don't want to upset anybody. Let them know what's in it. So you just, whatever the teacher wants to do to make it blend into our room, that's their choice.
Thank you.
I think you really, this was just so well thought out. It was really, oh.
A great idea.
Yeah, really, really fantastic. Thank you all very, very much for coming tonight. Thank you. All right, some new business for tonight. Our program of studies, Situate High School with Ms. Rundle and Principal LaRanger.
Hello. Thank you for having us. I am here, Ms. LaRanger and I are here to present the program of studies for the 2024-2025 academic year. I can't believe I'm here already. So we have a couple of changes, a couple of minor tweaks to some of the courses for title changes and minor course descriptions. But we also have a number of additional highlights that I wanted to kind of talk about tonight. I have the department chairs are here. So if you have curriculum questions, they are more than happy to come up and ask and answer some of these, some of the questions that you may have about the course offerings. So we're just going to run through them really quickly. In business education, we are really pleased to announce that our Honors Deca Marketing Shark Tank Experience Class is going to be a dual enrollment class with Quincy College. That will allow an opportunity for high school students to earn college credit. And if you have any questions, I'm sure Mr. Renary can go through some of the process for how he was able to bring that to our students. We're going to have another elective called Fashion, Marketing, and Merchandising as a semester elective. And I believe that that course came as a result of students wanting it and really talking to Mr. Renary about, you know, it would be great to have some more opportunities in the business department that has more fashion and merchandising. And so we met with them and they put together Scope and Sequence. It's a really tight curriculum. So hopefully, we'll see some interest in that course this year. So as for the English, one big change that we have in the English department is that 12th grade students will now be able to take Advanced Placement English, English Language and Composition, which has traditionally been a junior year course. So now the juniors and seniors will be able to take that. We also have our AP Literature course that has traditionally been for seniors, but now next year, seniors will have the opportunity to take the language or the literature if they haven't already taken the language. That's pretty exciting. And as you know, the College Board sponsors the Advanced Placement courses. In History and Social Studies, I believe Ms. Lesniak might have mentioned this when she did her presentation, but we are adding an AP Seminar class to the program of studies. That is a skills-based research collaboration communication course. Not so much content. It's more about helping students learn how to do research and communicate with one another and present findings based on their research that they're interested in. And we're really excited to have that in our course catalog for next year. The following year, we will add a course called AP Research, which will be, which will dovetail with the AP Seminar course. And we have applied through the College Board to have an AP designation, capstone designation school, which will allow students to take AP Seminar and AP Research and receive a three or better in those exams as well as three additional AP courses. And if they take the exams and do well, they score three or higher, they will get an AP designation, AP capstone designation on their diploma. I have a call into the College Board. We haven't, they haven't told us yet if we've made the cut, but I'm working on that. So hopefully, I'll have some updates for you soon on that. We're also adding AP Comparative Government, which is one of our courses that talks, that focuses on politics outside of the US. Right now, we have AP US History and AP US Government courses. But we felt that we needed to expand those offerings to provide students with the opportunity to learn about world politics. In our math department, we have a couple of changes. We changed the name of our Advanced Algebra class to Algebra III. Our AP Computer Programming to AP Computer Science A, which is in line with the AP designation through the College Board. And we're opening up Honors Computer Engineering and AP Computer Science Principles, which is a failing course for freshmen. So incoming freshmen will be able to elect to take those courses. In Science, Engineering, and Technology, we are renaming our MCAS prep course to Biology Strategies with a new course description that more reflects our, the work that the students will do in that class and the support that they'll receive. And we also added an Environmental Stewardship and Engineering Pathway, which combines the theme of STEM, Technology, Science, and Environmental Studies. And Mr. Newton can speak a little bit more about that if you have specific questions about that. And then we added a couple of, a couple of title changes to denote the project Lead the Way Curriculum for some of our classes that have that designation. We're just going to put that in our course titles. And as for World Language, every year, we replace the French 4 and 5 and the Spanish 4 and 5 with the alternating courses. So next year, we will replace the film classes with Francophone Now. And for Spanish, we'll replace it with Londo 21. And that's an alternating curriculum change that we do every year. I think I covered it. So if you have any questions or comments, the department chairs are here to help you answer them.
Great. Question?
Ready to go? So thank you. This is, I'm super excited about some of these courses that you're offering. So I guess a couple of questions. The first is with courses like AP Seminar, the research, and these comparative government, do we currently have staff ready to teach these courses? They seem pretty specific. I'm just wondering in terms of background and experience, are we going to be doing new hiring related to these courses?
She'll.
Yeah.
She'll be able to best answer that.
Great.
Hi.
Hello again. You're becoming a regular visitor.
Happy to. So we don't need new staff. AP Seminar, you cannot teach unless you go and get a week-long training through Bridgewater, well, it's not through Bridgewater, but it's held there. And that's because those teachers actually have to score some reading exam. So that teacher is committed to doing that this summer. AP Government is obviously the College Board curriculum, which we're working through right now. And that teacher's also going to this summer go and get trained. So same staff as what we've had, but going to get the training to make sure they're able to do an excellent job.
Great. That's awesome. Thank you. I have one more question, if that's okay? A more general question. I, first, I love that the students are asking for courses like Fashion and Merchandising and really being sort of, you know, wanting to match their interests. I'm wondering, in terms of process, like how does that work? Like does it, what's the sort of, you know, critical mass that we have to reach to say, oh, we should offer a Fashion and Merchandising course? Like what's, when it's coming from like the grassroots like that, what does that process look like for you guys to decide or men and women to decide?
As far as running sections, I mean?
Or just deciding that it's time to have a Fashion and Merchandising course? Like what's the critical mass? Because I'm sure students would say, oh, I love this. You know, you'd get one-offs here and there. So like, what's the decision point to say, yes, it's time to do Fashion and Merch? I'm just curious what the thought process is.
Great. Do you know the answer to that?
Well, it all starts with students. And there's a couple of students here, Bailey and Savannah, who have an interest in this course. They are the founding members of the WBA, the Women's Business Association here in Situate High School.
Yes.
They approached me last spring, right? Last, last school year with an interest in fashion and design and wondering what it would take to get a course. to get a course introduced into the Program of Studies. This fall, uh, let's assess the need, right? Let's canvas, let's uh survey your peers at the high school. Let's go down to the middle school and see if there would be interest. Um, they met every obstacle I threw, not obstacle, every um, every query that I threw at them, right? Like, let's, let's assess whether there is a need, whether the students were interested. So there were a series of um steps that we went through and one of those was actually designing what a semester might look like in our curriculum design software, the Atlas Rubicon software. And this fall, they worked with the lead, lead marketing teacher, Mr. Mackey, on what that might look like. The reality was we had a really good entry level marketing course. Our sports and entertainment marketing class is very, very well populated. Um, you might imagine there may be more individuals that present as male in those classes than, than would be female. And they're like, well, wait a minute, you know, we really want to access entry level marketing concepts, the O P's, all sorts of foundational um contents and skills related to marketing, and we'd be very interested in the merchandising and fashion realm. And so there we are, right? And so we've always run based on supply and demand and students boots do the walking, right? Like we will run, run programs that are under enrolled and they know at this point forward what the course enrollment process looks like, um, how to engage with peers to have them sign up for the class and um, you know, we have a fixed number of staff, right? And so we make decisions on number of sections based on the staff that we have. Uh, and they're well aware that if we don't have enough to um enrollment or interest to run a section of sections, then we tried and we can keep trying. But it's a little bit of supply and demand on that end, that's why I closed.
Thank you.
Yeah, hopefully it's helpful, is that?
Yeah, definitely.
They were, I'm, I was very impressed with their initiative and leadership.
Well done, ladies. I think I would.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I have a question about the um, the Deca and the Quincy College. Is that credit specific to only Quincy or other colleges?
Yeah, so I have a little one sheet, I'll give you everything in my, my, again, the process that I followed. If you could pass one of those down to me, please. Um, so it all started last June, um, you know, there's, there are no AP classes for business education. There's a potential AP Business Principles in the pipeline, but I've heard about that for years and it hasn't materialized. And then I started to ask questions and do some Google searches about, you know, what is dual enrollment? I use a great ally and give you some great feedback on what that might look like and what that could look like at certain institutions. And there was roadblocks, there was collective bargaining roadblocks. Um, oftentimes they'd want their professors to come in and teach the course, right? Which could create challenges. Um, and then I found uh went Quincy College and I started to look at their website, dual enrollment, and I'm like, oh, wait a minute. Waymouth, Milton, uh, Marshfield, some schools. I started to make some calls, like, tell me more about this, because I didn't know, I was educating myself. And essentially I got in touch with Quincy College, started asking a lot of questions and I didn't hit any like, what felt like non-starters or roadblocks that I couldn't continue to collaborate with Heidi or Bill or anybody on to see if we could continue to nudge the process forward. And then basically over the summer, I exported our curriculum from Atlas Rubicon and looked at their syllabus and I basically created a crosswalk from their, their course, their, their uh Quincy College Mar- uh MKT 202 Principles of Marketing course and our Yearlong Decker and Shark Tank course. And they lined up really well, if not, we go into more depth because we have more time. Their semester is, you know, half a year versus a full year course that we have. Um, so they were really pleased and um they, they shared it with their faculty and asked some follow-up questions. And ultimately they're like, yes, we feel like this meets the criteria of us feeling comfortable with uh applying credits for our marketing 202 course. Uh, if a student were to take the Decker and Shark Tank class in Citrus High School. Great, and then came like, here's an MOA, an MOU and all the things that I
Love it.
Then handed off to uh Bill and Heidi and they had a meeting, I think you met with the president uh over the summer of Quincy College. And um, yeah, I wanted to meet, we started with one and I think there's other interest in the department chairs as well to see if there are other touch points that um where we could expand this. If, if you're a business guy, it feels like a, a great value, right? It's um, the cost for the Quincy College credits isn't exorbitant and the opportunity to offset uh down the road. And I saw my alma mater of uh schools, Stonehill, great school, business schools like Abson, Merrimack, Stonehill, like, wow. Um, those schools accept transfer, the transferability of Quincy College credits into their institution. It feels like a great thing, so here we are.
And the, and the great thing about it is a kid who graduated from Citrus High School and the student will walk into it with, with credits, which is, you know, financially that's really good on the family, so. So credit to Greg and his staff for putting that together, it's a really important piece.
Thank you. I don't know if it was a Greg question.
No, it's not a Greg question, it could be a Greg question. No, uh, my question is more around, I guess, a process for this, our pathways distinction program, which I feel has really come on the last couple of years. Um, my question is, at what point do students know that that's an avenue to, to make? Do they find out after they've taken all these tests, hey, you qualify for this distinction program? Or hey, you're a freshman, if you do the following steps, you will be awarded that.
Coming back, coming back.
Just kind of curious how that works to see if it's a proactive thing on the student's behalf or they kind of just fall into it because of the sequence of courses that they've taken. Yeah, so exactly, we didn't want it happen, the students to fall into a designation. Uh, we started about a year or so ago, teacher Patrick Dubinai with this um graduation distinction honor um of meeting criteria in um business education, meeting criteria in the sciences and meeting a criteria in global, global studies, right? Okay, um, and then as we started to dig into this a little further, Heidi, awesome supervisor, she is, she's like, hey, are you aware of this um designation through DESI, this Innovation Pathways designation? And I'm like, oh boy, here we go, let me, let me dig into this and well, we went, we went needy into this process. And the reality though is if we have a, um, calling something a pathway, we should do our best to follow the DESI criteria for being a pathway. Um, so this fall we applied for, basically it's a two-part process to get officially recognized as an Innovation Pathway School. Uh, part A, we successfully were notified uh that we were approved for uh Environmental Sciences, Patrick, and Business and Finance, two pathways through DESI, which will open up all sorts of opportunities for us as a school. Um, and we are working through February 8th as part B of that application to get us into a pipeline of all sorts of, I think it's a five-year cycle grants and training and all sorts of um professional development and um connections that we can make through the designation. Um, so part of that grant application process is identifying entry points for students to be able to fit in and get out if they so choose. If they, um, and actually we started that process last year with education of middle school students in grade eight as they come to the high school. Interested in the graduation pathway distinction at Citrus High School for Business? Stock by taking a business class, sports marketing, fashion merchandising and marketing, entertainment and event marketing, restaurant resort management. A semester class to get them into the pipeline to see if they're interested in, in business, right? Um, part of that application is um two technical courses. So the two technical courses that students must take would be our Investing and Personal Finance class, which is a year-long course, as well as our Deca Shark Tank and um, Deca and Shark Tank course, which is a dual enrollment course. Also part of that is um advanced level coursework, which is, could be a dual enrollment class, but in our case, um, we're denoting two APs. There need to be two APs that are part of that. And so students would appeal our uh, two most logical, AP Statistics, AP Lang, transferable to any business-related skill. Um, students can also appeal to others, uh, as well as varied selectives. So those selectives could be Economics in the Social Studies Department, it could be Public Speaking in English Department or a series of um our other semester electives that we have uh within the Business Department. In addition with that, in Citrus, we ask for um additional enrichment opportunities such as participation in Deca. Um, running the WBA and helping support the Credit for Life um affair that we have. Um, we have real estate clubs, finance clubs, investing clubs that are all meeting regularly throughout each block during our school day on Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, uh, as well as a hundred hours of practical experiences, which dovetails nicely with our internship program, our outreach experiences. So a student would need a hundred hours related to business and finance or in Patrick's case, environmental sciences. That helpful?
Yep.
I'm really excited about it, it feels like, it feels great to be part of this. No, I, I'm glad you said it, you kind of really just started this over a couple of years ago, because that's what it feels like to me too. I think it corresponds with, I know Heidi kind of, I feel like I associated with a lot of what Heidi was doing. And I just wanted to make sure that students were aware, I kind of, I view it as like a major in college, like you're kind of picking your interests. And I just didn't know at what point they decided or, or um introduced to that possibility. That's really both the way, the root of my question, but I, I understand. I think it's obviously easier if they are aware of it earlier so they can kind of pick those classes as opposed to either hurrying up to do it when they're a sophomore, junior, or just, they just have to take these courses and then senior guidance counselor says, hey, you're one course away from meeting this pathways. I'm like, oh, I didn't know that, so I'll just leave.
You want to talk about the accidental.
Yeah, we, we discussed that pretty heavily of like, yes, we think this is a great opportunity for kids, but we also feel rather strongly that for a student to do it, we want it to be approachable for every student, right? Something that every student can achieve. Um, but also something that they have to make a conscious choice of, yes, this is a thing I want. Um, and therefore we, we kind of really did look at, uh, we pulled some students um transcripts and we were kind of like, oh, what's a kid that we know takes a lot of environmental classes? Who's a kid that takes a lot of business classes? Would they have qualified? Is this the kind of kid that we think would have chosen um to go into this? And that, using that, we kind of landed on some of our own internal uh criteria of like, you know, how many credits we thought it should be. Um, and then we discovered we were stricter than DESI, so.
True.
So we're kind of re uh evaluating that as we go. I think to Mr. Gates' point, um, Citrus High School actually applied uh six years ago um for an Innovation Pathways designation. Um, when I think this was either the first or second year DESI offered it. Um, we did not move past part A at that time, we, we simply weren't actually ready for it. Uh, but as we've created our own sort of internal, we, we thought it sounded good for kids. We said, just because we don't get DESIs doesn't mean we can't do something. And so as we kind of developed our own internal ideas, we kept DESI's rules and ideas in place, thinking that maybe one day things would change and we could, and one thing that changed actually is dual enrollment. So um, we, we're ready to roll, I think.
I mean, I, I, I think another thing that's changed is, yeah, Heidi has been a great champion and advocate for a lot of these initiatives. And I'm not just saying that, because she's sitting here, but she's been great. She tells us these, she ignites a fire for us and then lets us take the ball and run with it. Uh, in addition, I would say that Julie Ward has been great being able to pull some of these larger initiatives that transcend multiple departments. Dual enrollment for one class of business education, I got that done. If we're talking pathways that transcend a lot of different disciplines and have a lot of tentacles, that could go down to, could have overreaches to um my cap implementation with school counseling, that's really important that we have someone like Julie to help pull all of those pieces together. A general manager to put those pieces together. So um, those are some of the systematic things. Uh, and as we've attended every workshop, they keep on talking about team, team, team. Um, and we have a, a good team now. And when, in reality, six years ago, there was one teacher who was really excited to try something and it, it just, the organizational structure wasn't there. It is now, and uh, that's why I'm really excited for the future.
Fantastic, Greg.
At 21 years, I get more excited about this stuff as I go. This is what it's like in my office on a Monday morning, it's 7:30. When he gets going, he doesn't stop. But it's, it's really um allowing more opportunities for our students, which is really cool. Yeah, so they're doing a great job.
That's great, I have a question, but it's sort of piggybacking on Peter's question. How, obviously the kids are advancing through these grades as you're developing the pathways and all this, all of this is happening. How do parents and how do we help support this and encouraging our kid? Like, you, you know what I'm trying to say? How do I know my child? How do I encourage them to get involved or like to figure out a pathway or is this a guidance conversation or is guidance meeting with the kids? How early are you meeting with them to explore that? Because you must have to tap in, like you said, eighth grade. Some of them are in ninth already, 10th, how are you hitting those, you know, kind of missing the curve kids in a lot of this?
We, we're going to have the showcase on the 18th and that, part of that is a curriculum base that we're going to go over some of the new programs that we're bringing in and some of the things that we're doing. So to let the eighth grade parents know that there is some pathways and some avenues there for opportunity for students, which is really going to be nice and informative.
Great.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say that um it's a partnership between the counseling and also the uh, the teachers themselves and the department chairs. Uh, we run, um, it's a little bit different like for the um rising freshmen, so the counselors will go down and meet with the individual. He'll be with the students in smaller groups, um, to talk about the program studies and courses that they can take. Um, and they will get information from their court teachers and also their elective teachers. Um, and then when they come to the high school, we partner with our, uh, with our department chairs to offer what they call a course carousel, where students get introduced to the di- the number, the different electives that we offer. Um, uh, one of the things that we're looking forward to this year is, um, because we have the website, the counseling website, all of that information will be one, one place. Um, I know that was something that was um a little tricky last, past couple of years because it was like emails and posts. Now everything will be live, one source on the website and I'm working with Digital Comms to pull all that information together. I'm also working with department chairs to streamline the process and um, we are going to have uh like um individual meetings with all of our sophomores and freshmen and juniors um in the next couple of months, so in the next month or so. So once this gets um approved, then all the information will be funneled through uh, through this family, so thank you for that question.
Yeah, no, thank you. One small one, AP Seminar, sorry, AP Seminar, what grade level?
AP Seminar is going to be open to all grades, nine through 12, yeah.
Does that work from the top down, sort of in terms of enrollment? Do you fill it, is there opportu- do the sophomore grades kind of, will freshman, incoming freshman register after? Will these sophomores, juniors, seniors?
They will register at this, everyone will register for their, register for courses at the same time.
Okay.
It's not like a first come, first served. It's like the courses are, the students choose the courses that they want to take, the selection. And then the department chairs and administration determine what courses are going to run based on the numbers and based on the, the FTEs.
Okay.
And how many sections.
Yeah.
Um.
So could a sophomore, in, in next year sophomore, not get one of those AP Seminar opportunities and incoming? How do you know who, well, I guess that only happens if you have more interest than thoughts available? Is there a preferential based upon?
So the way the schedule is built, they have um preferences given to seniors.
Okay.
Yeah, there is, there is um like a pecking order just because seniors need certain classes to graduate.
Right.
Um, they have one more year to
Yeah.
To take those courses. But when the schedule is built, it's built around, um, it's filled with those uh parameters in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, well, thank you all.
Of course.
So I just wanted to thank the department chairs, Ms. Driscoll, LaRanger, just for, uh, I'm going to try to conceptualize as they're talking about these things happen over the last, you know, four years or so, is the, I often talk about enthusiasm being contagious. And you can see it tonight when our department chairs are jumping up, excited to talk about new things, but it's also, uh, these are, these are all, you know, part of our goal to be the best. I talk about the world, some people are offended by that, but I, I'll settle for Mr. Orange, Best High School in the state. We're going to start there and then we'll work for the world. But um, it's really happening and they're really motivated for this. I think you saw all levels getting involved tonight, from students coming up with, you know, the type of courses they want. For us, in this case, Mr. Rinnery's example of us not settling for, just because DESI doesn't offer it, doesn't mean we can't do it. Let's go out and find a college and find a way. So all these things happen, just create more rigorous and awesome opportunities for kids. Keep in mind, our APs were predominantly juniors and seniors. Now we just opened this up tonight to freshmen and these are courses that they can handle. And um, you know, we still have to work out why we're doing all this and the good question tonight is that, have a real And the good question tonight is, have a real succinct plan on how we let parents and kids know back down in the middle school, get them excited about these opportunities exist up here. We do it for athletics very well, we need to do it with our academics and celebrate all these new things that Citroen has that a lot of districts don't have. So I always wanted to give a shout out to all of you and, you know, and with Heidi who's been kind of, you know, the brainchild on all this and kind of motivating everybody to get this done and really work as a team very coherently and collaboratively, and the results are for kids and it's really working. So I want to end with Heidi because she had a little more information on the topic.
I will be super quick, I won't even totally sit, I guess. I just want to make sure that Greg and Patrick and Julie Ward get credit for the tremendous amount of work that they're doing. I know you see these grants coming in and it's probably like, oh, good, another one. The amount of work that it takes to research and write and make these things happen is tremendous. And Patrick and Greg and Julie found out through their work that when we didn't get that six years ago.
Six years ago?
It wasn't, it wasn't a happy ending. They had to meet with mass hire, they had to meet with outside agencies, build relationships that were, that didn't end in a great way. They rebuilt things. And the grant that they'll be getting, I hope, if they're successful, successful with round two, is for $75,000 a year for five years. And then once you have that designation, you are one of the schools who can apply for, you'll see grants, oh, a pathways school. We will then have access to tons more opportunities for our kids. So I can, I just want to make sure we give them, they kind of undersold themselves, the amount of work that this has been. So I just want to make sure that we give them a shout out. And I want to thank the entire team for doing such a great job documenting their curriculum, our most good people. And I know it's a lot of work and it's tedious, but we're doing what's best. It's not the most glamorous, but we're doing what's best for our kids. So thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
I just want to end that I didn't mention is the teachers. Obviously, the most important impact on student learning in the classrooms. And the great example that Greg gave tonight is that teachers are going on their time in the summer to get trained to teach these courses, that's how excited they are about it. So, and we're not using additional hires or resources, these are people that are passionate about it. So I think that's pretty awesome, a good reflection of our staff and how much behind us they are.
So I really appreciated the conversation that Peter and Nicole brought up about getting parents the information. And I found it interesting, though, that you said that athletics are sort of a known quantity when you move from middle school to high school. And so I would just like to offer for us to think about what's the role of Digital Comm's and our student reps who come, they mentioned DECA tonight, but I think we could think creatively about how to do a better job of publicizing all of the academic success and awards and, you know, just like we announced athletics and the wins. And I think we could do that in different ways with academics, which would serve as another pipeline to share with students. Yeah, and the arts, of course, yeah, the arts, non, I guess I'd say non-athletic sort of efforts as a way to publicize, too.
And sort of the arts, I think. Great idea, thank you.
Okay, Superintendent Burkett, leadership support. Thank you, free patient gentleman.
I'm here tonight to talk with our OPM, John Lemieux, and our architect of Doorwood here, John Walters. Here tonight to talk about the new Hadley, excuse me, Cushing Hadley Elementary School project. For a few reasons, we want to keep this on the front burner, we want to keep the committee involved, answer your questions, but also want to make sure that this is on the minds of our community because the vote for this project comes this spring, it's coming up, it'll be on us pretty quickly. So we want to make sure that we continue to just provide information, answer questions, and make sure that everyone's educated on this very important project, which is vital to, in my opinion, to the future and continued success of our great school district. And so I typically have these guys first on the agenda, so, because they're paid by the hour. But also tonight, I wanted John, who's a Duxbury guy, to hear how swift the Citroen schools are doing. I'll pay the extra. Right, so I'm going to.
You're going to win the last Super Bowl, right? I did too soon?
Very touche. That's what kind of, that's kind of what people are working with here, all hardworking guys and doing great jobs. So I'll turn it over to you guys to start the presentation, John.
Thank you, happy New Year, everybody. Don't throw anything at me for that comment, I apologize. My son was in the one where you beat us with 20 seconds to go, so. Who's got the slides on to the presentation? So we're going to start this like we start most of our updates, just kind of an update on the schedule. Again, as you all know, this is a long process, right? This is our view of the overall schedule, you know, should the project be voted in by the citizens later this spring. You know, we're looking at a school that will open in the, essentially for the fall of 2027. So what we're, what we're going to focus on tonight is really where we are in the schematic design process of the project. Next slide, please. Well, thank you, that was great. So the red line marks where we are right now. We are a little bit, actually, obviously into January at this point. The schematic design is well underway. The documents have actually been sent off to the cost estimators in the next couple of weeks. We'll be getting those cost estimates back. Those estimates will be used to put together, quote unquote, the number, okay? You know, we've talked about it, we've talked around it, but the reality is, is that, you know, the drawings have to get to the level of detail where they are now, where they can be adequately reviewed and estimated by two professional cost estimators, one that's working for Don's company, one that's working for our company. What will happen as soon as we get those back is we'll make sure that those two folks, as well as our combined teams, sit down and do what's called an estimate reconciliation to make sure that, hey, what did you have for concrete? What did you have for concrete? Well, why are these numbers, even though they're close to the same on the bottom line, might have differences trade to trade to trade? And that's really important because if two individual firms looking at it are looking at these drawings and interpreting things differently, we want to make sure we understand why, we want to make sure we understand if there's some, you know, someone's number for, you know, electrical is 30% more than the other firms, how come? You know, so that we can try to weed that stuff out on the front end here before we, you know, again, put this number to paper, include all of our other project costs and develop what's called the total project budget, which really, you know, when we make this submission to the MSBA, what we're telling them is, here's the scope, here's the budget. In fact, you will sign as a, as a town, the project scope and budget agreement that basically locks us in to what we're doing, where we're doing it, and how much is going to cost. Even though Don and his team still have, after an approval, another year's worth of design before shovel goes in the ground. But that's just, you know, much like you have in the Gates project, that's, that's the way it works with the MSBA. So we are driving towards a submission date of the schematic design of the end of February. That is a hard deadline if we want to be considered at the MSBA board meeting towards the end of April, which of course we certainly do. At that board meeting, you know, at this point, you know, you walk the road with the MSBA, an approval by the board is essentially, like I say, 100%, but it's pretty darned close because any problems they have, once the submission is made, that's why it's two months in between. You know, they will raise their hand pretty quickly if they see an issue. In fact, they will have a call with us within two to three weeks of submission where we will get confirmation on the number and more importantly, their share of the number. We have a spreadsheet, we calculated, we'll share it with Doorwood here, we'll combine it and get it as close as we think. But again, until it goes through the machine at the MSBA, we won't know for sure what they're going to stand behind for a grant. Again, we'll get you, we'll get you close. In between that submission and the approval by the board, a ton of public meetings, right? So that we can inform the community, let everybody know what's up, really build on, you know, the good, the good work that's been out there so far. And then ultimately, we end with, you know, a special town meeting that is set for April 29th and then a ballot vote on May 18th. And we need approval at both of those, both of those to be able to tell the MSBA, yes, the Citroen's ready to stand behind, stand behind the project. Next slide, please. Good news, though, is that, I think we might have talked about this here before, back in October, the MSBA did increase the total project funding limits. Before, they had a cost cap on square foot pricing of $393 and a cap on site work of $39 for a combined total number of $432. That's now been increased to $605 a square foot. What does that mean? So if this project is running rapidly for construction, $850 a square foot, your reimbursement rate only applies to the first $605 a square foot. Everything on top of that, that additional $245, if the number's 850, that's at zero, okay? So at the end of the day, when people say, oh, our reimbursement's 43%, that's of eligible costs, costs that are governed by the cost caps and all of the other items that the MSBA puts in place, you know, in defining what an eligible cost is. So this is great news, this will certainly impact some of those early estimates that we had in increasing the grant to the town. But again, you know, we're moving, we're moving that way. And I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent. Talk about the guiding principles.
So, thank you. A question that's come up, I wanted to backtrack a little bit, you talked about, John talked about public meetings. I want to say that we just finished up our first round of the world tour, if you will, going to multiple meetings and meeting people where they're at, senior center, each elementary school, middle school PTO meetings. So we're looking forward to continuing that communication. We've gotten a lot of good feedback, so I invite people to go to scit.com, S-C-I-T, dot org, excuse me, scit.org. And right on the homepage, there's a big round icon that says MSBA project. And click there and invite people, welcome people to go there and check out the frequently asked questions, look at some of the photos of the current conditions of the schools, if you haven't been there, to learn about the why we're going through all this. I think sometimes we forget that when we have our conversations, it's the seat, the condition of the buildings and go from there. So, I was going to, can you put that? I've got some in my memory here, so. So this is on, the question that comes up from a lot of these is redistricting. And, you know, redistricting is, you know, an unpleasant but necessary experience that is helpful in the long run, quite honestly, because it redistributes where folks live and go so that our schools are best utilized. And it is part of the process through MSBA, they make it, you know, when they do their enrollment, that's why we have a certain enrollment, because they calculated what all of our schools can hold. So I wanted to, the stories I'm hearing from folks is there's been some hurt feelings and there's been some concerns in the past about how things were handled or how they felt about moving into the Jenkins School and things like that. So we want to avoid that, we want to make sure people are heard. So we came up with some guiding principles and we wanted to share that with the community. So even though the demographic study can't happen until the year before the building's open for the most accurate numbers, we can start a lot of this work beforehand so people get a good idea. And here's just some of our principles that we're looking at, that people will be heard. So there'll be a number of seaside chats beginning as early as next year. And to start to listen to people's stories, to hear what's important to them, what do they value? What do the families value? What do the kids want? You know, what's really important? So we get a really good idea before we make these major decisions, what the community's feeling and what the people impacted are feeling. I think it's an important first step, that people have multiple opportunities to be heard or handy decisions are made. And then, of course, the minimal social, emotional impact on children, always comes back to our students. So some of the things, just for examples, is to keep families together. Got somebody that's already in the school and they've got a younger brother or sister coming in next year. You know, that's an obvious one, because otherwise you're splitting families up, you're creating, you know, issues and concerns for parents and for the well-being of kids. And then the neighborhood hurts. These are, you know, what's great about Citroen is you have neighborhood schools. We want to keep that feeling together, although we're consolidating schools, we want to try to keep that neighborhood feel together where kids are sticking together. So if the kids that went through all the construction are still there, you know, keeping those kids together and having them move over to the new school is an obvious one. So there'll be some layers to this, and the last one's communication. So the feedback that we receive in the guiding principles, and then once we start getting numbers in, we'll be transparent, like we've done with our budget, like we've done with all these presentations. It's just to be honest with people and then we make the hard decisions. I think people will respect and appreciate that we had a process, that we had a rubric to use, to come up with. You know, and the final thing that I don't have on here is that the ultimate goal is going to be to keep as many kids in those two districts in the school as ultimately possible. That's the goal. So while we have a number, you know, that's a kind of, that's an MSBA number. Once we get in there, we might see that we can find some ways to get some more kids in there so that, you know, ultimately the goal is to keep everybody. Can't promise that certainly, but that's just my feelings on it. My ultimate goal is that, you know, if this could be a smoother transition with the more children, we are able to allow to come to that building.
Great, thank you. I just want to say, sitting here tonight, listening to Autumn Maburne and what's happening with the musical program, and then listening to the curriculum advancements as a Citroen resident, it's just so exciting to me. And I love what's happening here and how the schools continue to evolve, which is really exciting, as you saw tonight, so I'm glad to get to sit through that. But, actually, if we could. Yeah, well, what I can do is just, before the slide comes up, as part of the school building committee, there's actually also a sustainability working group. And what that group is doing, it's made up of a host of different people, is to design a building that is super energy efficient, healthy, has a lot of great daylighting, as kind of a baseline. And then we look for ways to look at the building holistically to see how we can best meet future advancements in technology and whatnot. And just one, one item I'll bring up tonight is this whole idea of what we're doing potentially with the mechanical system. So your heating and cooling and ventilation within the building. And whether it's looking at natural gas, looking at natural gas and/or electrical, or looking at just an all-electric building, which quite frankly is a movement that's happening out there really throughout the world, but in Massachusetts in particular, we're seeing this happen a lot more. And one thing you want to talk about is geothermal, which is this idea of harvesting the regular temperature of what happened about 600 feet down below the surface of the, of the ground is about 50, 55 degree temperature that allows you to circulate water down through that temperature and make your heating and cooling system more efficient because you're starting with a baseline temperature, say, in the mid 50s. And in doing that, along with looking at an all-electric system, you're going to be super efficient in how you deliver your energy to the school. So if we go to the next slide, and there are great incentives to do this. And in doing so, working through the Federal Inflation Reduction Act, so the federal government's involved also, there is the potential to get about $6.4 million back from the federal government in reimbursements when the project is done to help fund this system. A lot of work is still to be done, but in trying to figure out how to have this happen, there's been discussions with a couple of different groups, Tax Attorney Jacob Goldman and Undaunted K-12, which is a group that's helping communities that has worked with, or presented to the MSBA, and they seem to be really interested in that. So I just wanted to give you a sense for what may be happening with the building from a sustainable perspective and what could potentially happen in terms of additional reimbursement coming in outside of the MSBA, which is quite exciting. And maybe the best thing to say about the $6.4 million or thereabouts is that it would essentially pay for the additional cost to do this all-electric, all-electric geothermal system. So more to come on that, but I wanted to give you that update. Moving forward, going to give you a quick update on where we are with the site plan. Something that you've seen before, but I want to keep it fresh for not just school committee, but people who may be watching from home or here in the audience. Very exciting. Very exciting how this site is being used with Anvano Road at the bottom of the slide and the circulation around the site for buses, emergency vehicles. We're working to get cars off the road with students being dropped off or picked up, separating pre-K student drop-off from the remaining students within the school. All kinds of opportunities for walking around the site, potentially making connections to conservation land up in the northwest corner of the site, playgrounds, opportunities for a century garden, rain garden. So there's a lot going on out there. The recreation of Flannery Field, which is very important. So, and then other outdoor spaces are actually with, not within the interior of the building, but in the inside of the building walls, right? We've got a lower elementary and an upper elementary courtyards for active play, for outdoor learning, potentially for outdoor gardening. So a lot is happening on this particular site. So just wanted to update you with how that's going. And then with the floor plan, if you see what's happening here with the curve at the bottom, we're going to rotate that now. You'll see the first floor plan. And the building is basically divided into thirds, right? With the center core being your main entrance, your library media center, the idea of learning being on display, administration, so there's safe, secure access to the building. And then you see art, music, gym, cafeteria. All the core elements within the building are in the center. So after hours, that part of the building can be locked off. And the classroom wings, the lower elementary to the left, which is towards Anvano Road, that's pre-K, pre-kindergarten, kindergarten on the left on the first level. And then the upper elementary to the right, which is grades four and five, both on the first floor. A lot of exciting things happening, not only in the classrooms, but we have extended learning spaces outside the classrooms. So students can work in small groups beyond the classroom walls. All the pink boxes that you see adjacent to each of the classrooms, those are shared spaces for both student and teacher opportunities, for specialists to come in, special education. So a lot of, a lot of great things happening within this building. And then when you go up to the second floor, basically that floor plan carries up throughout from the first floor to the second floor. You see grades one and two to the left as part of the lower elementary school and with grades one and two, and then grade three over to the right with a connection to grades one and two. So that's kind of a reintroduction for all of you here, but I wanted to just keep sharing where the building is in terms of its layout. What you have not seen in what we presented to the school building committee, I guess it was the second week of December now, we were planning on presenting this to you in December 18th.
Right.
Wonderful storm which canceled the meeting, are what the building is proposed to look like. Want to share that, in general, what we're trying to do is be a good neighbor, I think, first of all. Design a building, build a building that's of a scale that's complementary to the neighborhood, single-family residents that occur out here. We also wanted to be, to provide a building that reflects situat's heritage. It's seaside, it's coastal imagery, looking at actually, looking at snow fence or beach fence, looking at dune grass, looking at rocks on the beach, looking at rocks in the water, looking at sea foam, trying to pick up colors and materials that could be afforded to us. So the arrows that you see up here are going to be the views that we're going to take a quick look at. And we're very excited about where this is going. It's got a great scale to it, as I mentioned. It also is an elementary school, so wants to have some playfulness to it. You can see some of the inspiration in the lower left corner here. But we're looking at a building with a strong base, a brick base, maybe reminiscent of rock or stone, that we see stone walls, stones within the beach. And then a wood siding, but it's really going to be metal, it'll be a very durable material. The punched window openings that you see here are meant to be playful. The vertical fins that you see there, they're not just there for show, but they're actually helping to control light coming into the building as the sun moves around throughout the day. What you're seeing here is, the title shows, a view from Anvano Road, looking into the southern entrance or what could be the pre-kindergarten entrance to the building. And as we start to move around the building with the next slide, we step back, we give a sense for how the building may look from the road driving up to that larger parking lot. And what you see here is straight on with the main entrance, but the library media center with its sloped roof there and the greens and blues, kind of mimicking the seagrass. Administration to the right, kind of that solid core with the lower elementary, a two-story piece to the left, the upper elementary to the right. And then as we get a little closer to the building on the next slide, you get a nice view of this library putting that learning on display. You can imagine at nighttime, this being lit up and there's an event in there and how the light might come through, get filtered through that different colored glass. Same thing happened during the day when sun's going in there, how that might play off on the walls and the ceiling and the floors while students are actively engaged in learning and experimentation. And then one last view, which gets you a little closer to that main entrance and the library media center. So I think we, of course, you can imagine we went through a number of different iterations of designs. What jumped out with the members of the school building committee was that the library media center with this big overhanging roof became something kind of iconic to the building, which is very nice in the way it sets up everything else that happens around. So that gives you a sense of the building and its design. And just next up, so I know John talked about this a little bit, but our drawings and specs are being reviewed with a cost estimator. We get those back the end of January, we'll review those. And then, as John said, we'll go through and reconcile with Vertex's cost estimator presented to the school building committee on the 31st. And then moving forward, we will continue to have public forums, ones on February 7th. The schematic design package is submitted to the MSBA at the end of February. And then we anticipate more public forums throughout March and April, an MSBA board meeting, which is where they'll vote on the final cost and the project moving forward. And then special town meeting April 29th, and that exclusion vote scheduled for May 18th. There you have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions?
What I got? It looks great. We haven't seen it in like two, I guess, two months. So this, really the design looks fantastic. I mean, we hadn't really seen what it would look like. So this is, I think this looks great. I guess while I have the mic, you know, my questions, which have been the same, are twofold. Number one is just that field. The others talk about whether we use turf or grass. Just want to remind everyone that we can't irrigate. So I know that's, I know it's ongoing discussion, but I just want to make note of it. And also the same thing I brought up, that I know everyone's aware about, is the use of cushioning once that's demolished. Just want to make sure that we're all aware of that. I know that we're trying to include the cost of demolition in our, the buffer line theoretically, but that if a field's there, we can't irrigate that either. So I know that we're involved in what's going to happen after cushion gets demolished, but just in any discussions that we have, that we remind any of those that are making decisions, and you can't irrigate that. So it can't really be a deal, in my opinion.
So both of their items have been at the forefront of the SBC. And we are estimating both the cost of doing an artificial turf field at Athalie and the demolition, and at least leaving a grass field at Cushing. We don't know how much further that may be going, see if it can handle the project, even though it would not be reimbursed by MSBA.
Yeah, that's totally right. I just want to make sure, I know that you guys have been on topic, but I just want to make sure, make the comment again publicly that we learned the lesson the hard way at the old Cushing field. We built the field and we couldn't honor it. So I just don't want that same issue. Again, I know that you guys are aware of it, but just saying it again.
Thank you, guys. Great job. I just wanted to bring up, while Don was going through it, just some other topics that have been brought up while I have the opportunity. We're talking about the ability project. Just clarifying some confusion maybe. The preschool addition to this and the importance of that. We talk about opportunities for all situat residents, where this is an elementary and not everybody, we talk about redistricting. Having an early childhood program housed there would allow that, would allow us also to increase the number of students that are able to come in. We have waiting lists, we've had waiting lists in the past, and this will be an opportunity to allow those students the access and those families. So I think that's something that's very important. Also that, I think there's been some confusion in the community on whether that's reimbursable. And I'll just get confirmation here that that is reimbursable. Yeah, so I wanted the community to know that that is reimbursable, because there has been, again, some confusion out there of whether it is or not. So very valuable. And the third part, I think inevitably, that, you know, universal pre-K is right around the corner, especially in Massachusetts, and we'll be ahead of the curve in that as well. Just one more example of the importance of that. So I do want to just kind of talk a little bit about that pre-K piece.
Yeah, just real quick on that, the MSBA basically, in the enrollment that they let situat study, said, and you can study pre-K. Our experience is that when that project budget goes in, they include the cost of the construction of the pre-K and all of that in the project budget, and will reimburse for that. There is one small area where they will not, and it's usually the difference in the furniture. You know, we gave them an enrollment for $460. You're choosing to do $560. We're going to make you eat full freight for this, you know, for the furniture, for those other 100 kids, as opposed to, you know, the partial costs that would be covered for the first 460. So just it's, just to clarify, there are some costs that they won't cover for that, but the important one, they will.
I guess on the, sorry, but on the, MSBA increased their reimbursement rate. I mean, when was the last time that they adjusted it? Like, were those, were the old reimbursable rates from like the 1980s?
No.
How often?
We wish. No, that $393 was probably in play for a couple of years.
Couple of years. So they do revisit, they do revisit it.
Well, what, the reason for the differing numbers, right? When we started as a project team, that number was $393.
Yeah.
And we were facing a construction cost of $850 already.
Yeah.
So it was, gosh, the, not even, when we talk about that effective rate, you know, if situat's number is 43, it's 43, but right off the bat, they're not even covering half of the construction cost. So you're right off the bat, you're at 21. You know, people are saying, well, what's the difference? That news where they said they were going to do this was hugely welcomed, the fact that, again, they've never, in our experience, been right up against what the true market cost was, but they were always, you know, within a range. I think we're back in that range where we historically saw it. It just took a while for them to recover from that crazy escalation of the last couple of years. So at least, at least we're back, I think we're, historically we're a couple, ratio-wise, where they seem to be a good place.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Assistant Superintendent Driscoll and Kate Martin. And we only listed Kate, but we have quite a huge group.
Oh, and Greg.
Okay, so we're just going to pass this down. What we are sharing today is a curriculum instruction and assessment update, but it's focusing on what we've done for professional development. So you all know this, you remind us of this, we remind each other of this. Curriculum instruction and assessment is more than just test scores. You see the symbol for the universal design for learning and the multi-tiered system of support that's in our strategic plan. Under one, teaching, learning and leading, this is what we are working towards. We're working towards using data to get results that isn't just academic. We have to make sure that we're balanced with social emotional behavior and academic so that we get the best from our students. So it's just a reminder of our mission, our vision and our core values, focusing on our, I guess, endeavors to get to this universal design for learning. So the question is, how can it all be done?
So this is my slide. So as Heidi mentioned, there are a lot of endeavors that we are working on. And we have found that one of the best models over the past couple of years is to divide and conquer. And so we have created a core group of experts that are in leadership positions. Some of them are here this evening. And we serve as resources on a particular topic. So as you can see from this slide, we have a variety of different committees. And we all serve on those committees and have become experts in a particular area or focus area. And the benefit of this is we're able to focus our efforts. We meet frequently, but our meetings are super productive because we have one task in mind throughout entire academic school year. We often report back to the larger professional development committee about our progress, seeking input or feedback. But this really does help us move initiatives forward quickly because we're focused on one particular item and we can support one another by becoming experts.
Yeah, we'll take a minute. Patrick's going to explain what our meetings used to look like and what that experience might have felt like, and we're right now. I'll pick up on that.
Gee, thanks, Jim. So, really just continuing with where Ms. Julah left off. This idea now of being a little more specialized, we used to really all be the proverbial jack-of-all-trades and we could easily spend entire days in just series of meetings that would have entirely too many people in them to be able to really move forward. And it really was just kind of a mess and a jumbled. And sometimes we would use the phrase like "death by initiative", because we would just all be working on, you know, seven, 10, 12 things at a time. But with this updated model of letting each of us kind of pick one or two kind of real focus areas, we've definitely been able to move forward much faster.
Yeah, I can recall being in a meeting and, you know, it convenes and the meeting breaks up. 10 minutes later, the same members of the meeting, of a new meeting group get together and we start again. I think our new structure is much more action-oriented, where I feel, just from my perspective, like part of a team where we're really making some swift decisions, carefully thought out though. And it's more efficient for sure.
Let's take a little look at the numbers, shall we? So one of the great systems, again, that Heidi has implemented is that we need feedback. We should be seeing how we're doing, whether it be meeting the objectives of the PD. Is the PD relevant for our staff, which is how you gain credibility with your staff, is by giving relevant PD, making sure that present is competent, capable, qualified. You can see, you know, very basic, like your scale, strongly disagreed and strongly agree. You can see the scores that we're getting are consistently agree or strongly agree, which is rewarding as one of the leaders of PD sessions. And you can see we went from solid B. I don't know, it looks like we earned an A there, Heidi. But we just get some clear data and feedback on how we're doing. And it's very rewarding from our group to see that feedback. So it lets us feel that the systems changes that we're implementing are working. Back in 2021, we did have implemented a systematic process or a feedback loop of sorts. All started with, all starts with educator service, right? We wanted to hear from educators. We wanted to make sure there was no educator that wasn't heard or couldn't have input on potentially what could be offered to PD. That feedback then went to the PD committee, which was broad. There was a lot of stakeholders in the room. And that could, Kate Martin was going to talk about some inefficiency. And that could, Kate Martin is going to talk about some inefficiency that we implemented since 2021. That feedback would sometimes get bogged down, move on to district leadership, and then that feedback loop would start over again. But one of the things I think has really allowed us to move forward in the last two years, Kate Martin is going to talk about right now.
All right, so in the fall of 23, we did change the way we're running these very large groups and created a small group PD council. And there's only four or five of us, sometimes even less than eight, in a more frequent manner. And come up with some targeted ideas and then bring that to the larger group. Because if you imagine our larger group is every department chair, a principal, a teacher, Heidi, it's just too many people. And so we've been able to take the big ideas, really flesh them out in the smaller group. And we can meet more often in the smaller group setting. And then anything we feel that is important can then be reported up to DLT from there.
So on the next slide, you'll see what Greg talked about with let the numbers talk. But I think when we talk about a new system and gathering feedback, one of the great opportunities we had this year was to deliver professional development in a way that was connected to educator feedback. Provided a menu of thoughtful options. And as Greg pointed out too, our feedback for what happened in November and now is our interim. And then what teachers will continue, our educators will continue to do in March, already shows that the feedback has been fabulous. And to Greg's point, like as one of the presenters, you know, you get honest feedback from our teachers. Like it's honest, we know we're going to get it, we want that so we can improve. So we'll go to the next slide and you'll be able to see this menu of thoughtful options. We didn't make up these options. These options came directly from teacher feedback and what they needed for both their own individual professional development, maybe in like a core specific subject. Or maybe bigger in technology with growing with Google or some specific project based learning. So we're going to pass the microphone over to Heidi.
So with this list, you'll see we have a couple of check marks and a couple, I don't know, don'ts, so what would you call that? So we essentially offered all of these and then had, you were referring to a funny like window, the doors open where everybody can sign up. It was, we opened signups and it was a big deal. And all of the teachers across the district, kind of like our students do, said, this is what we want, this is where we want to go. So even though the initial surveys were very heavy with, we want UDL, we want project based learning opportunities, people did not sign up for those. So we canceled those two offerings. A couple that we want to highlight is the artificial intelligence workshop. That came about with our librarians and with our partnership through Bridgewater. We had a technology expert come and people loved it, they were happy to have it. And Kelly Bell also set up specific training with Northeastern University for all of our nurses. And then the last one that we want to highlight is the self-directed professional development. So that means all of these options were 15 PDPs except for self-directed. I'm sure all of you know, teachers do need to get their master's degree in order to get a professional license. So we have some teachers who do not need PDPs at this time. They are taking two or more graduate courses to get on track to, to get their renewal. We have other teachers who maybe are retiring in December. Do we need to have them sign up for one of these and be in the room? So we have the option of self-directed. So that means if an educator chooses, they can say, I am selecting something outside of this and I'm going to use this time for my graduate class. Or to take a class on the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth online course. There's, people did tons of things. And before I go to the next slide, I just want to comment about the professional development committee in meetings. When I first came, I had an individual meeting with every single person who I would be working directly with. And they're not shy at all to share their thoughts. And I heard a lot about meetings and I heard a lot about the professional development committee. People did not want to be on it, they did not want to, they didn't like what was coming from it. And it was a pretty scary thing to tackle. So I want to commend everybody who's been on that committee, who's taken the time to say, look, we're not going to make any quick decisions. We're going to get tons and tons of feedback and slowly create a structure that works. And the small PD council, which a couple of us are on here, last spring developed an activity so that the large PD council could help make the structure that we used. So some of my favorite things, scented markers, sticky notes on the walls, it was wonderful. So that we made sure that we really were all in and could all speak intelligently about why we are doing what we're doing for professional development. And so what's next? What's next is we are collecting PD proposals this spring for FY '25. So that means in addition to what people ask for, which we create as educational, as curriculum leaders, there are also individuals who have said, hey, I'd like to run something, can I do? Yes, we are offering that people will write proposals and they'll be reviewed by the committee to decide what we'll offer for next year. We also continuously review PDP requirements for renewal to make sure that we're in alignment with renewal options. So we will always offer 15 PDPs in special ed, we will always offer 15 PDPs in English language, teaching English language learners. And the other, the third step that we're continuing is to maintain PD opportunities for outside of the school day. And some of those are Massachusetts Partnership for Youth and SPS workshops led by district leaders. So I just want to jump back to the beginning. So even though we, we took a headfirst leap into professional development, the work that this committee does, each of these committees has a very deep, deep, I guess, portfolio of work and tasks that they are responsible for. So it's impossible for us to really share every little thing that's happening with all of these, but this, these committees have been absolutely wonderful. The first year, for those of you who are here, the evaluation committee was tasked with combining a Google system and a, what was the one that we got rid of? Space line edge that went out of business into this new system. And we had from July until September to make that happen. So that was the, that was the really, I think, the impetus of that, like this is why we had to do this. But it's worked out as a great model and I think we all have go-to people that we really appreciate. But we'd, we'd all love to answer any questions.
I guess my question is, from an outsider, it looks like the biggest change for me, the PD is a full day as opposed to we were doing half days, I think, in prior years. Was that something that came out of this committee or was that something that was come about some other way?
Well, we have had full days, those have existed, we've just done them at the beginning of the year at different times. But one of the biggest, I think it was a year and a half ago or maybe even longer, last year, one of the biggest part of the surveys was that teachers did not feel that the half days were effective for professional development. They're effective for a wonderful half day, you know, but they are not effective for professional development and people preferred the full day. So that is something that we did. Now, might there be uses for half days in other places for other reasons? Possibly, and that's definitely something the PD committee would consider. But what we shifted to was instead of shutting the entire district down for a half day, if there's a need for the third grade teachers to be trained in a specific thing for teaching history, let's make that happen for those teachers as opposed to shutting down everything for the whole district. And so far, I don't want to jinx us or anything, but it has, it has worked out, so we haven't had to shut down.
And you on?
Well, all your thinking, I'm just saying.
As a parent, I feel like the parent feedback is that from this end, people prefer full day versus the half day, you know? So we're all on the same page.
Anybody else?
I want some questions.
No, it just sounds like it's great that things are more efficient.
Yeah, we're happy that you have efficient days.
Somebody who also has to do a lot of meetings.
I'll just add, with the 15 PDP option, we've had in the 20 plus years I've been here, different ways to get PDPs. And it was two here, three here. Being able to do a full day in November, a full day in March with some work in between and leaving with the 15 PDPs, which is what you need. Heidi mentioned whether it's SPED or teaching English as a foreign language, I need that to renew my license. And the fact that situat can give that to me and I don't have to go outside really has made a positive impact on the teachers. And if you don't, you know, you have the whole cycle, so if you don't need one of those, I thought some of those would fill up immediately. And they didn't because we have enough time to get there. So the fact that those will, knowing that we can always have that 15 PDPs in SPED, if you're not a specialty as teacher, things like that, is a game changer for teachers.
Wonderful, all right. Well, thank you all for sticking through the meeting with us tonight, we appreciate your time.
We're always cold, Janice.
I'm always hot.
Okay, then it must be cold. See, I'm always cold, so I'm not a good thermometer, but if you're cold, I'm going to take that out of you. I am noticing my mind. You just have to bring everything. All right, so subcommittee update from our policy subcommittee discussion. No voting, just a first reading.
Yep.
Marianne, Janice.
Yep. So I took notes because some layers and changes, but I think they're all in a good, in a good way. So we reviewed the existing policies related to school improvement plans. We had two policies that managed to both be redundant and inconsistent, so.
Fantastic.
So we decided to scrap.
That's actually an achievement of itself.
Yes. So we decided to scrap both of those in favor of one policy that we think will cover all of the pieces and therefore, you know, provide consistency and clarity. So a couple of the shifts, so this is adopting pretty much wholesale the mask policy with an addition of, I think, one sentence at the top. But what we liked about this new policy is that it clarifies the roles of all the different players. So the principal is to write the school improvement plan with the school site council. It is approved by the superintendent and we review it. So we would not vote to approve these plans going forward, we would simply be reviewing them. So that's one change that's important. Another is the timeline. So this moves the timeline up or back, I guess, depending on how you're looking at it, to July, which makes more sense if we want the school site council to be involved in the creation of the plan. It doesn't make sense to elect a school site council in the fall and then immediately task them with building a plan for the school improvement. So this allows the prior year, school site council and principal who've already been working together for at least a year to come together and, you know, create the plans. We think that that timeline works a lot better. I think that also ideally gives more time for people in the school, like teachers, to digest it. Perhaps there are parts of the plan that would impact their own professional learning choices or their professional learning goals. I just think that that cadence is probably better. Similarly, on the cadence of the plans, we would like them to be rewritten every three to five years, but updated evenly. So right now, I think this year we approved plans that were one year, two years and three years. So we'd like to bring some consistency, but also leave some space for, you know, maybe the high school has a comprehensive enough plan that five years makes sense for them. You know, we want there to be some flexibility, but we also want people to review and update them annually so that we're not just writing it, putting it away and not looking at it for another three years. So we're hoping that that will give the opportunity for people to remind themselves, oh yeah, you know, here's where we are, like here's the progress we've made, here's what, you know, isn't going the way we hoped? And how might we course correct so that they become hopefully more living documents? And lastly, the content is outlined in a more specific way. So the content of the plans themselves is more specified and we think more comprehensive. And hopefully will provide better guidance to the authors of the plans. So those are the main changes, I think, I think I got everything.
I think you did.
Okay. Like I said, I had to take notes because there was a lot. Heidi, did I miss anything? No, it was perfect, okay.
We're going to discuss it?
Sure.
Yeah. So thank you, everybody, for working on that. I know that sounds like it was a heavy lift. So a couple of questions. So if the school committee, if Bill's going to be, if Superintendent Burghardt is going to be the approver of these school improvement plans and we are just reviewing, then what's, what's our role? Like what's the purpose of bringing in front of the school committee other than to share with the public, right? I'm just wondering, what's the purpose?
I think that's one of the purposes, I think, to have an outside perspective and someone who's looking across. But that's actually what's in the statute, that the school committee is the reviewer, not the approver.
So would the, so we would review and then, we would review before Bill would approve and then presumably the feedback would be integrated or?
That's actually not specified in the policy, the timeline of when the school committee review happens, so I don't know.
Let me, let me look, actually. I'm just trying to figure out how we can be both helpful to you and also thinking about your goals and how at the end of the year we do your evaluation, to what extent is the SIP then attached to the goal? So that even if we're not the approver of the school improvement plan, we are holding Bill accountable for whatever he approves for those leaders. Always in the spirit of everybody reaching their goals, not to be punitive, but to be supportive, right?
I agree, I just want to clarify that July 1st date is the date by which the plan needs to be written and submitted for approval to the superintendent. And what happens after that is not specified in this policy.
So that's not to approve it by July 1st?
No, submitted by July 1st.
That probably, probably corresponds to Bill's annual goal, right? Because you submit your goals to us in like September, October, something like that. So your goals would probably be related to the school improvement plans a little bit, correct? To some degree.
I mean, I think ideally we're trying to create some alignment from everyone's goals, including ours. And, you know, teachers' professional goals, like we want it all to be. Seems like it should be the reverse.
Well, the school improvements will be submitted to Bill.
July 1st.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I would think the school improvement plan would be keyed off of his goals, not the other way around.
No, no.
Probably not.
The, the school improvement plan is supposed to be detailed for that particular school. And Bill's goals are typically district wide goals. So when they submit their school improvement plans after the work that they've done all year, they're submitting it to say, here, here's what we hope to accomplish and do next year. They also will be getting data over the summer that will inform the school improvement plan for the next school council that comes in. So I hope that they'll be able to share that information in the fall as we have been. Because as Maria said, it, they do need to be updated here. So it's not like they can leave them as is. And I, I don't, I don't think, yeah.
And I agree with you, Dr. Kelsey, because I, so I think the guiding light is the strategic plan. So I think my, you know, when these are developed, keep in mind that the principals are meeting with me, I already have in mind with looking, so their, their goals are based that off of my current goals and then moving forward. And that's why I think they have the year to adjust those. I would take those in July and my recommendation would be certainly to share them with the school committee for feedback and then for approval. So that I could take that feedback in our, our last case where we did those, just if we play that out, you gave some great feedback. That wasn't a final vote. Now I could go back and say, hey, let's make these updates, then approve.
Then approve.
Without having to come back to clearer meetings and whatnot. It's not, this will be the first time we're doing it, so I would have to get used to sidelines as well. But that's how I would envision it. And then so as long, and before I would approve, and they'd have the expectation that they'd be in line with the strategic plan and moving. and moving their building forward at the same time. And back to what we talked about in, you know, with consistency, but also there needs to be a very unique thread that each school moves forward while moving the district forward.
So the way you explained it makes sense. And I think in the spirit of institutionalizing and knowing that you're not going to be here for, none of us are going to be here forever, that I think to the extent we can provide some guidance to, because what I'm hearing you say is something's going to happen in the spring where you have a conversation and a reflection on what was going on, what you're thinking about to the fall with the building leaders. I think it would be good to be able to instruct the leaders to say, kind of based off of that conversation, you're going to develop, right? That conversation is going to inform some of what you do with your school improvement plan. If that, if that can be articulated just in a really basic way, that would, I think that, right? Because I just think otherwise that just sort of disappears into the ether.
It may look like the tail's wagging the dog.
Yes, that's what I was, that's what I was, it's like they do their plan, then you're looking back.
And then I do my goals after that.
Oh, I'm going to do my goals because, but it should be that you're leading the district with them in mind, right?
Agreed.
Yeah.
We do have some language in here about the like review process, but there's no timeline attached to it. So are you asking for us to add in something about timeline?
I don't, I don't know that I necessarily need like a date. It's just like at the end of the year, there's a reflection and debrief about the sort of, just like Bill will present at the end, you know, we'll do the accountability at the end. So like with that information, the building leaders go into the summer with some of those sort of loose ends in mind as they think about, if that makes sense? Just that I think there needs to be some coalescing of the minds at the end of the year, right?
Yeah.
To talk about this stuff.
That makes sense. Otherwise, I don't think you can achieve your goal, right? Like you're not working together, right? So does that mean we do or do not need to revise this? Just getting down to business in terms of what has to happen next. Do you want to read it again?
Yeah.
Why don't you read it again?
Okay.
And why don't we all read it again with this conversation in mind?
Okay.
And then see if we need to do anything.
Right, because I feel like that's process less than policy maybe, but I understand for clarity's purpose.
Yeah, because you, somewhere in the policy, you said providing guidance on the details of the SIP. And I wonder even if that document could just say, I need to reread it. I'm going to, so let me reread it.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to waste your time.
I'd like to even get Bill and Heidi's input on it, since you're the one that will be doing it. What feels right for, based on your experiences?
Yeah, I think it's, it's normal to, even if you wanted to, we're there, they're there. I always give feedback based on that it's the best policy, no matter who's sitting in this chair. Because part of my, you know, our legacy is going to be that we put the people after us in a really good place, but they don't have to change these policies. So I would even be okay where the review, the school committee review prior to superintendent approval. Maybe that's a simple word in there and that still gives me a lot of time to do that. That means, I know that, we know that we're talking to the next person that comes in that might approve them and then present to you and back to Dr. Kowalski's point, that's kind of what's the purpose then. They're done, they're approved.
Right.
You can give feedback, but it's not going to be helpful. And I always appreciate your feedback. So I think that, that always, then, you know, you know my goals and your goals too. And I think that's a part we haven't talked about. When you're thinking about your goals over the summer, that part of time, you can give some feedback on these aligned with those as well. So I think that, that timeline and the process is helpful. Having them done earlier and then even, you know, sharing them at the end of the year, you know, is all those processes, if you wanted to put that in there, you know, that's something we could do.
The policy that is in there right now, the proposed policy, is literally the mask model policy. The most updated mask model policy. What is different that GNS and Maria really wordsmithed over are the first two sentences, which actually say three to five years. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
The three to five years. So if you look at the first two sentences, that, that, maybe that's where there's an opportunity. But we have to be very careful about creative writing because that's what we end up cleaning up at most of these meetings that we have for the policy subcommittee because, what did you say? We are both redundant and conflicting at the same time. So the mask policies are usually pretty solid with, and I think the place to look is in that beginning line.
Thank you.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Great, so we'll all reread and then we'll re-discuss.
Okay.
So can I have a point of clarification for the next agenda item? Do you want it to be second reading vote or second reading discussion?
Can we do both?
You can do both. You can discuss and then before vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can hash it out.
We'll say vote, but it's part of the Robert's rules or we do discussion.
Yeah, we'll discuss and then vote. People will come to a consensus by, by then.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, no need to prolong it, I don't think. No, you have lots of other fun policies you want to review. Alright, approval of minutes from November 20th and we also have December 1st, but yeah. No, they're not.
We're also.
Probably process.
Yeah. You want to table it at the next time?
Table it? Not a problem.
So we lost transition slash translation?
No problem at all. Warrants? But we don't have anything to read into. Correspondences, nothing of note to my knowledge, other business? Future agenda items, anyone? Heat in the library. Alright, if nothing more, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 8:17.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.